Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Ms. Couch, you wanna do the invocation and then we do the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Lord, thank you for your blessings. Thank you for bringing us here tonight. It's through a holiday and just put us in a peaceful place. Lord, we pray for our nation, we pray for our elected people, for our employees, for our residents, for our missionaries, and for our military. Lord, we pray that you help us to be a bright light, to help people coming into Harrellson County to live a better life because of you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the previous meeting minutes. August the 6th and August the 27th, everybody's had an opportunity to read those.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the previous meeting minutes. All in favor, show a right hand. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda? You've all had an opportunity to look over the agenda? See anything you'd like to add or take away? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, show a right hand. Public participation on agenda items? Hearing none, we'll start with item number one. Danielle, would you like, you got more people with you? Okay. It's a proclamation for Recovery Month. She is a board member on the U Haven Board?
Alright, I got a proclamation I'll read here for Recovery Month of 2024. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and well-being, and recovery from addiction occurs every day through a variety of recovery support services and treatment programs. And prevention and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover across Georgia and around the nation. And millions of people across the United States are living happy, joyous, and free in long-term recovery. And in the 2024 Mobilize Recovery Across Georgia Bus Tour celebrates that recovery is real and recognizes that we are never alone in this journey through recovery. And the Mobilize Recover America, or Recover Across Georgia and Georgia Recovers Bus Tour will deliver 100 overdose aid kits to communities across Georgia to be accessible in local government buildings. And education throughout our communities is about recovery, and addiction is essential to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by many people in recovery. And to help more people experience and sustain long-term recovery, the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, the Clinton Foundation, and the Georgia Council for Recovery, Mobilize Recovery, Serv-U RX, and the Georgia General Assembly Working Group on Addiction and Recovery invite all residents of the state of Georgia to participate in National Recovery Month. So thank y'all for all that y'all do to help with the recovery process in Harrellson County to kind of slow down that revolving door and allow people to get back in the community and live the lives that they want to live outside of their addiction. So we appreciate you.
And the Mobilize Recovery Bus will be coming to your Haven on Thursday at one o'clock.
Speak on the microphone, so people.
The Mobilize Georgia Recovery Bus is actually coming to your Haven on Thursday at 1:00 if people would like to come and join and learn about recovery or just kind of celebrate National Recovery Month with us. Thank you.
And they donated one of those kits to the county last time, last year. Thank you. Item number two is opening of road bids for 2025 and vendor selection.
Our first bid is ER Snail. And hopefully this will go a lot faster than normal because they're supposed to have a totals page. Which they don't. Okay. Well, why don't we let somebody total this up while we go to the next one and hopefully?
That'll work, we'll come back to it. Okay, item number three, rezoning.
We still got.
She's gonna open up another one just for like.
I mean, unless you wanted.
Just say compile them together, make sure they're all ready, and then we'll just revisit it.
That's what I was thinking. Let's open them all up. Everybody can see that they're still sealed. Make sure we have a cover sheet with a total price on each one of them, and then let's come back to that.
Okay.
Okay. Rezoning request, Harrellson County Tax Map 0105-0042E, located at US Highway 78 and Hurst Mill Road. The current zoning is A1 agriculture. Requested zoning is conditional use of 20 acres for an event venue requested by Joseph Couch. We had the public hearing at the work session. It went through the zoning board. They unanimously approved this. We need a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make the motion to approve the rezoning request.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, show a right hand.
Who was the second on that?
Right. Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Hey, just watch, see it as you build this thing.
We're still opening if you want to go to.
Okay, you want to do. Item number four is the financial software.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to see if any of the commissioners had any questions from the last meeting.
The one that you chose was the 301, is that correct? Okay, and you said that we, it would be an easy transition. Is this somebody we already do business with?
They own the software that we currently use, so the transition should be smoother and more probably better transition of the data. Sometimes in transition on these things, it gets a little squirrely on stuff because everybody's different.
The tax collector uses this same company too.
They do, and this is the one that if we, there's multiple reasons to go with them. It has all the modules we asked for. Some of it is very similar to what we currently use, so we feel like there'll be a little bit better training time than there would with the other. The, one big item is going with them, we will still have access to all of our historical data. Two years of data will be transferred with about any company you go with. But we'll have complete access to our historical data from the current system at no additional cost.
And you're getting everything that you need, correct?
We're getting everything that we need, yes. This is, everything we have within our current system plus some extra bells and whistles as far as reporting. And this one, this company is also able to work with you. If you have a specific report you need in a specific format, if they don't have it, then they can, they will work with you to create that report for you to use.
What's this company name?
This is Harris Smart Fusion is the software.
They're also the one that will, the first time that some of these reports are run, like payroll or some of the bigger reports, we'll have people hear. They won't.
Right.
There won't be support over the telephone, they'll be standing next to.
Okay, and how long does this transition take place? When will it take place?
We, well, it depends on when we, it'll depend on their schedule now, but sometime within the next seven to 10 months, we should be transitioning. It's a timely, very time-consuming thing to do, transition to make. And some of the other companies were up 14, 15 months.
Okay, and the money's gonna be spread out over five years?
The original cost will be $94,933 and then plus the $53,793 for the customer support and maintenance. But the $53,000 will be each year for five years.
And we're gonna be able to take the 94 out of splash?
We should, should be able to take it out of there because it is a complete upgrade.
But the annual fees will have to come out of the general budget?
Right.
The 53,793, okay.
And this also due the first year, or is that 94?
It would also be due the first year.
94 plus.
The 53, okay. 53 for five years. Okay.
Any more questions? Need a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve the financial software vendor?
Second.
Do we need to mention Harris in the?
It probably wouldn't hurt to say to approve Harris Smart Fusion.
Yeah. You want to redo your?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the financial software for Harris Smart Fusion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, show a right hand. We're there. Item number five, approval of Title VI policy. Maria, you wanna? That's just the DOT, safety thing that changes that they make occasionally that we went over at the work session. Do anybody have any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Title VI policy change.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show a right hand. Motion carried. Item number six is ambulance and equipment lease. Everybody's had an opportunity, it's been sent, the copy of the lease sent to all of you. You've had the opportunity to look at it. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the lease to AmbuCare for ambulance and equipment.
I move we approve the ambulance and equipment lease for AmbuCare.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show a right hand. Item number seven is final physical year 2024 budget amendment. Don, that would be you.
I presented the information for the, at the work session for the budget amendment. There has been an update to the general fund. You have a copy of it. We did some pre-ordered information, and we had paid some vehicles out of insurance where we had put the money in, and they wanted that broken out in revenue and expenses. So there's a $75,000 increase to revenue and a $75,000 increase to expenditures. The add that are all the same.
Anybody have any questions? Hearing none.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Of course.
Go ahead.
I spent several hours today going over these, and a lot of these budget amendments unfortunately come to us about a month, six weeks late because we've already set the budget for next year. Or we have looked at our department heads budgets request. And in going through it today, there were some really glaring numbers, not just in salaries but in other line items in many of our departments, not all of them, but many. And then there was other expenditures within those departments that were out of line. And you take a look at what they budgeted last year, plus what their amendments were to, of what we're doing here tonight, their amendments, they're greater. Those numbers are greater than what they have set in a budget for this upcoming year. So I wonder how much our department heads sometimes look at what they are spending for it to come up with such, some very glaring numbers. Our department heads have got to take, and I hope that maybe this office at the chairman will allow to send something and where the board is cautioning them to take a look daily at their budget and keep up with their expenditures and the line items. And we've got some really good department heads that have been here a long time, and I really feel like some of these expenses should be better understood by those department heads. We can't do anything about last year's. It is what it is, and we're gonna have to make those adjustments. But I really want our department heads to look at it, and we as a board, I think, need to take a glaring look every quarter as to line by line where these departments are. There were some that had no adjustments, and I applaud them. They weren't on the list. That's really good. And some of them are large departments and some of them are not large departments. It does no rhyme or reason if they were way over, depending on their size. I would like to call out that in reviewing, one of our larger departments in the county, and that is our roads. And I thank Terry Edwards very much because he's one obviously that looks at his budget. Because when I got to his department, there were virtually no adjustments. And I say that because there were some minor ones in Terry's but very small. And some of those that didn't have any, I'm sorry, I can't recall. We got 30-something departments, and I don't know which ones didn't appear, but not every department did appear. But we gotta do better or we're gonna find ourselves in a world of hurt next year, county-wide. That's all I got to say about that. We just gotta do a better job of it.
I do know when we send out budget package, they get three years of information before they have to, just so they can see what they've spent. I put that together for our every department.
And I appreciate you doing that. We're gonna have to give some direction, I hope, out of this office to maybe make an impression upon them that this has got to be done. Maybe this is a criteria, we talked about raises at last month's meeting, and we give a cost of living raise, and then we give department head raises based on their performance. And I think this needs to be weighted very heavily on what those department heads get or don't get. So hopefully this layer won't be as bad next year. But we're setting ourselves up for a bad, bad situation if those department heads don't get their budgets in control and just quit sending those numbers because they're trying to make us happy. I want realistic numbers. And these, a lot of these are apparently not realistic. Thank you, that's all I'm gonna say.
I'm gonna interject on that. Most of the departments do real well. And there's been some things that happened that made some departments go over, but some really don't care either. I think next May or June, you're gonna have a real problem with your budget, you know? I didn't vote for the one that we presented because I don't think it's gonna work. But moving forward, need a motion to approve this amendment.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment, 2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the amendment. All in favor, show a right hand.
We're ready.
We're gonna back up to item number two. Terry, you wanna come on in? Do we have a list of the roads that this consists of? And let me say what we've done with these roads. Terry and I have got out and rode the roads. But we're trying to concentrate them all in one area. We're not gonna pass a road that needs paving to go yonder and pave one for somebody that keeps calling every day. We're gonna get them in the area as we get to them. It costs us $10,000 every time we move this equipment. And I'd rather pay, I'd rather spend that money on paving than on moving. So you're gonna notice that most of these are in the same area.
It's Tin Oaks Road, Felton Rock Mart, Mount Zion East Church Road, Mountain View Clubhouse, Talbot Hutchison Winners, and Pine Brook. The first bid's Northwest Georgia Paving for $2,355,720. I put these in order, so that's actually the lowest bid. ER Snail, $2,498,813. CW Matthews, Blunt Construction, Magnum Paving is $2,823,503,82. Bartow Paving is $2,908,684,06. Baldwin Paving is $3,016,726,81. The last one is FS Scarborough Civil Contractors for $3,226,310,91.
Can you give us that, oh, sorry, can you give us that list of roads again?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask for as well.
Tin Oaks Road, Felton Rock Mart, Mount Zion East Church Road, Mountain View Clubhouse, Talbot slash Hutchison slash Winners, and Pine Brook.
Pine Brook?
Brook.
Okay.
And how many miles of paving is that?
Let's see.
Okay. You still got your head. Okay.
Holy pit.
I was somewhere around 25, just.
Okay.
Where's Pine Brook located? Is that the one in Bremen? Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, we got two, four, six, eight companies. Are you familiar with all these companies? Are there any that you, you know, when you send out these bid packages, anybody can bid? Is there any that you prefer over the others?
Just off of the last paving, I was stuck between the two because I think ER Snail's currently doing some, and then we had the big project for CW Matthews there, Ace of Cash and Old Ridge Way and Macedonian. I know you kind of had them under some pressure because we was working them before school started and all that, and they were, they were kind of following your lead on it. So I know you got a relationship there, and they're kind of middle of all these quotes.
What about the Northwest Georgia? For $143,100, you think ER Snail would be that much better?
Can we postpone this till Terry make and look at some paving, that North Georgia paving has gone locally or within neighboring counties or some mileage?
The biggest concern I have is I think Northwest does a lot of smaller municipalities.
Okay.
My biggest concern is the volume that we have. I do know that they do quite a bit of work for some municipalities, but they're cities, small streets and things like that.
I think they did Waco and Tallapo, so they got the bids for both of them. Think they did Waco and Tallapoosa, they got the bids for both of them.
We used them on the road behind Tallapoosa primary.
It's just uh I've never seen them. I've never seen them contract a job this big, have you?
It's a This is a total of fourteen and a half miles.
It what now?
It's fourteen and a half miles is the total of the roads. Well.
I would be honest with you, the liquids, rock, you know, I, I budgeted, my, my rock budget this year. Correctly, after I turn in a budget to the, to the board, I get an increase coming in just a few months, so I didn't anticipate that. Rock costs twice a year now. So hard to anticipate what the rock costs on, but I mean, they're not, they're not raising it little, they're raising it big. So, and they don't give any warning, so.
Feel good about ER Snell? Feel good going with ER Snell?
I'm comfortable with them.
They, because they did the workout on the west side of the county, right? Stedman and some of those roads through there.
Yeah, they've, they've worked, I think.
Good job from what I've seen, I drive up that one.
North Georgia have their own plant or they buy?
I think they got one maybe in Bartow, Calhoun.
Calhoun.
But they typically buy, they can't transport material that far because I mean, you gotta have your specs on that as well to get it here. They typically buy it from, you know, a local provider, which is now, usually CW. There's just no way from haul that material that far with it and keep it in within heat specs and be able to put it on down, you know?
He was gonna comment about Terry looking at their work or something.
Yeah, but uh their work, uh, do you think? Like you said, you think they do smaller jobs, municipality, smaller streets? Right. If the board didn't? If we, if we passed on it tonight, would you be able to look at something for next month? If this board decided to do that, and I don't, I don't know if there's a time. Whatever y'all's pleasure is, I'm.
I can answer any questions, but I'll recuse myself from this, any of the votes conflict.
I'll be honest, I'm just stuck between ER Snell and CW Matthews, in my opinion, because I've seen the workability of both in the county.
I'll be a bit up to discretion, Terry, one's a good department, so whichever one he feels more comfortable working with, I think that's the one we should go with, so.
You know, there's not but a hundred and eighty thousand dollars difference. Two and a half million dollar bid on the top, on the bottom three. So we're not talking about, you know, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when you're talking about three million dollar. Who do you feel the most comfortable with? Who can you work with the best?
Well, like I said, not working with that company in fifteen years. My comfort level is with the people that I work with every other year, which is ER Snell and CW Matthews. I'm just saying that, but you know, the parameters of my job, I feel most comfortable with those. I feel like, you know, I do know their quality, I know their work pace, I know how they work with us. Not saying that North Georgia won't do those things, but I do have some hesitation in.
We did advertise that we don't have to take the lowest bid.
I'm sorry.
We did advertise that we didn't, did not have to take the lowest bid.
That's what I was just looking for.
I don't think we normally do, I think we kinda waive that.
But it has to be in the bid.
Another only times we've ever done it is mostly when it's in the county.
While they're looking at that, how close is ER Snell and them out there on the southwest side? How close are they to be? If has some work to do out there?
That's Providence Road, Providence Spur, Williamson Road and Old City Highway seventy eight.
Does this include next year's AL-MIG as well? We spend not much more than two, three this, did we spend two, we spent two, three this year, didn't we?
Spent three and some change.
Three and, like, three, one, something like that.
Three, one.
I think the biggest problem is the increase is what we hadn't anticipated. So it's taking a little bit more generated funds to accomplish something things we did prior years maybe.
And you know, the thing with ER Snell, if if uh this is lower than I, what I thought the bid was gonna be. I thought they was gonna be upwards of three million. And we got seven hundred and thirty five, I think, AL-MIG money and you got to match it out of your uh budget. That don't leave but two million dollars. That don't leave but uh one point six, one point don't leave one point five by the time you added. And that's about four months' time, isn't it, dog?
That's about how much?
Four months. AL-MIG money, of not AL-MIG, but of T-splosh.
If it's only four months, what happened to the twelve months?
The one point five, we will collect in four months.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a lot more than this.
Okay.
So, and that's the point I was trying to reference. ER Snell has always been good to add the roads to the contract that we, you know, with this bid.
Right.
Well, like last year's bid, we added Providence Road and we got the extra nine hundred and thirty four thousand dollar AL-MIG money. We added uh Providence Spur and we added Williamson Road and we added uh Old Highway seventy eight. They were not parts of the original bid and ER Snell went ahead with the same price or basically the same price and added those roads to it because we were in that area. And we wanted to spend our money because that's what the people paid the tax for, was to pave the roads and that's where we was gonna spend it. We're gonna have a lot more money than this. So uh if it's in the contract that we don't have to take the lowest bid, I would recommend ER Snell because he will work with us in head to.
Looking through the RFP, it does not expressly state that.
That we had to take the lowest bidder.
That's correct, so if the board wanted to look at that, I would say then let's do put it off for a month and we can look closer at the responses in the um the RFP.
Okay.
We could probably get it, get it reviewed and if you wanted to, after the work session in two weeks, we could call a special call just to get this done so we can get on their schedule.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that, we need a motion to put this off.
I'll make the motion to table it for further review for the wording in the contract until the work session uh to be followed by a special call to vote on it.
Okay, all in favor, show right hand. One abstained, I mean, polled. Abstained, yeah, I gave you the opportunity.
Thank you, Terry.
Item number eight, Intermetals MOU and Tax Abatement Act.
So this project started in October of two thousand and twenty and here we are today, finally approving the tax abatement for a building that is almost fully constructed. Hopefully you guys have seen that over there in the business park, fifty two million dollars worth of uh building going up and I don't know, seventy acres of gravel is gonna be out there, so it's, it's a, they're starting to put the spur in, it's a, it's an amazing project. So what you guys have before you today is the memorandum of understanding that basically outlines the tax incentive. So this tax incentive is a twelve year tax incentive. So it's got two zeros and then in year three, which would be so twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, they start paying twenty percent of the value of tax and then it just kinda moves, moves up from there. So, and if you remember, this particular project solved a lot more problems than just bringing about a hundred jobs and fifty two million dollars to the community. It helped us accomplish a couple of other items, not the least of which was getting out of a public private partnership that we had been in for twenty four years. So um this was a, this was a good deal for the community.
So we go up ten percent every year after that?
So it goes, let's see, year three, so if we assume that's twenty seven, it goes twenty, twenty, twenty five, twenty five, thirty, thirty, thirty five, thirty five, fifty, seventy five, a hundred. Kinda limbs them along and toward toward the end.
And any additional uh equipment purchase would have to stand on its own or reap uh for our tax abatement if somewhere in the next twelve years they add two.
So if they add equipment, if if, and I think they'll probably use up most of the fifty two million dollars, so they get kinda capacity. So fifty two million dollars worth of, of, we'll call it monopoly money, but fifty two million dollars worth of capacity to abate. They can, if they wanna add a piece of equipment in year four and they haven't used up all of their fifty two million dollars, they can drop that in at year four. Now, it doesn't start a new abatement, it just pops in at year four. And then just kinda rotate, just goes with everything else. If, once they exceed fifty two million dollars, then they would not have, be able to add anything else to, to the abatement. Given their rock costs, they may even exceed the fifty two billion before this thing gets finished.
His assessor's done approved it?
I believe they approved it today.
Make a motion that we approve the uh Intermetals memorandum of understanding and tax abatement.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, show right hand. Thank you, sir. And let me, let me say something right here for the ones of you that don't know. Mr. McDonald called me this morning, he'll be leaving us in two weeks to, you know, greener pastures, we hope. But we wanna thank him for the job he's done in the last ten and a half years. We have, we have made some movements in the last few years, it's made a difference. If none of you have been to the old Buckingham uh industrial park, you need to ride out there and see the building, it, it, it's a huge building. Barco, Tallapoosa, Whirlwind Steel, uh several more, you know, that's just the ones that come to mind. In fact, we're gonna have the only tire recycling plant, I think there's two in the whole United States. And one of those is gonna be in Tallapoosa. So we'd really like to thank him for what he done while he was here and thank you. Mr. Boswell was chairman for a while, he had a big part in it too. Thank you. It's huge, isn't it? It's huge. What is it, four hundred ton, four hundred thousand ton of gravel? It's some astronomical amount.
Hundred and forty thousand.
Hundred and forty thousand ton of gravel. Okay, item number nine is purchase of dump trucks for public works. We talked about it at the work session. Uh Terry, I used the money out of the splosh to purchase these dump trucks. Need a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the dump trucks for public works.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, show right hand. Okay, that's approved. Item number ten, D-Fax Board Member Appointment, Samiko Strout, did I say that right? That's okay. The board has asked that she be appointed. I'll make the motion that we'll approve Ms. Strout as that uh board member.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, show right hand. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eleven is regional library board membership appointment. Does anybody have any recommendation? We have contacted or emailed both back both them and Department of Behavior Health and Development Disabilities. And we've got no response from either one of them. And if uh if y'all don't have somebody, what I'd like to do is maybe put an ad in the shopper and see if anybody that, you know, that we don't know would like to serve on one of these boards. And put this off till the next meeting.
That's fine with me.
Do we need a motion, we need a vote on that?
I think we can just do that because they'll be bringing it back to the board for recommendation to vote.
Okay. That was item eleven and twelve, public participation on non-agenda items.
None, I'm sorry.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, show right hand. We are adjourned.